Do you have to do that every time you renew now?
And I can cry.
Because I have to renew this year.
No, the thing is that what they told me here is I could renew my driver's license. But then on the 2018, I'd have to do it again and be another forty bucks. So then I might as well do it all.
I've been meaning to mention you.
No, I had to go downtown, which is, I work right downtown. But if you ever done anything downtown, it's nothing spass about it, period. And you have to have your, you have to have like passport, your birth certificate, or pass- passport or birth certificate. And then there's something else, like I have to show that I've lived here. Like I have to have a utility bill or I have to have my W-2. It said this and this. He said and. I, I, I happen to be. So all I need is the passport?
I think you need a driver's license.
And my passport.
I think is all you need.
Okay. I read it as that and that. So. Well, that makes me feel better.
How are you, Mark?
How are you? Haven't talked to you in a while.
Phones.
I'd like to call the Marmell City Council meeting to order for my first meeting. The, uh, I've asked Councilmember Vaporsen to lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance tonight.
Let's pray, Heavenly Father, we love you. We thank you for a beautiful day. We thank you for the health and the strength that you provided for us to be here this evening. We understand that all wisdom comes from you, and so we ask for that wisdom this evening. We thank you for the freedoms that we have and that we've been given by those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. And we do ask for the protection of the men and women that serve to continue to provide those freedoms for us. Our thoughts and our prayers are out towards those who have suffered recently with all the damage and loss of life because of the storms that have gone through. And Father, I pray that you'd be with them and their family members and others in our community who are, who are struggling because of similar situations. I'm thankful that you are a God who can meet every need and there's nothing too, too out of your reach. Pray that, again, you'd be with us this evening. May we make wise decisions that would honor you and honor this city. In Jesus' name we ask it. Amen. I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next item is special guests and announcements, and we don't have any of those tonight. Next item is approval of the minutes from the April 17th regular meeting. You have a copy of those minutes in your packet. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of April the 17th. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is public comment. I have one public comment card, but it is regarding an item that is on the agenda. So we will hear from that individual when we get to that item. Next item is a financial statement review, and that's done at the second meeting of each month. This time, we're at, we need a procedural motion from the floor that we read all resolutions and ordinances by title only tonight. We have a motion and a second to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only tonight. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is the, under unfinished business is the second reading of ordinance number 934 enacting supplemental provisions of the city code. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Marmell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas. An ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 934. An ordinance adopting and enacting supplemental provisions of the Marmell City Code for the City of Marmell, Arkansas, providing for the manner of amending such code and for providing when such code and the ordinance shall become effective.
Mayor, make a motion that we accept ordinance 934.
It's on second reading, sorry.
Oh, I thought it was third reading. I'm sorry. My bad.
You could, you can do that at the next.
Next meeting?
Yeah, you can hold that.
I've sworn off some of it, sorry. I apologize.
Is there any discussion on ordinance number 934? It will be on third reading at the next meeting. If not, moving on to new business, we have the, we have an item on, under new business, resolution 2017-09. And it says support for SB 140, which stands for Senate Bill 140. That's really not what it should have said. That was just kind of a placeholder there. And you also have another copy of the resolution that was passed out tonight. Alderman Holt had actually proposed this and sponsored this. And then Alderman Kelly also is a co-sponsor along with him. But it was, it's basically addressing internet sales tax, internet sales tax. Either local collection of it, or if there's federal legislation that would mandate that it be collected also. So I'll turn it over to Councilmember Holt if he wants to do this. Or, well, let's read it first and then we'll let you speak. How about that? All right, Madam City Clerk, if you'd read Resolution 2017-09.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Marmell, Plaski County, Arkansas, Resolution 2017-09. A resolution expressing that Marmell City Council's endorsement of state and federal legislation requiring that large volume of internet vendors either collect and remit any relevant state and local compensating use tax on internet sales, or that internet vendors provide the state and all relevant locality sufficient information regarding the internet purchasers to allow state or local government to collect such local compensating use taxes and for other purposes.
Okay. Councilmember Holt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since this is going to be a short meeting, I'll, I'd like to go through this as succinctly as I can. As a member, Alderman Kelly and I both are members of the Municipal League Advisory Council for Public Safety. Of the 400 bills that came up during the year, this is one of the bills that they were most interested in, in working for to see if it would, could get it passed. This bill is originally called the Quill Bill of 1992. That means about 24 years that the subject has been discussed. Last year, the Senate voted 69 votes in favor of the bill, but it still did not go through. Mr. Zimmerman, who is Executive Director of the Municipal League, advised me that South Dakota has a similar bill and hoping that one of these bills will go through. He also advised me that Judge Goseich and Judge Kennedy both seem to be leaning very heavily toward this bill. The league says that they're hoping that the bill will be challenged because they do want it to go to court and they do believe that it will pass. The City of Little Rock also presented the same, a resolution that is more extensive than ours, and I have a copy of that. I also sent a copy of our resolution to Mr. Zimmerman, and he, he does have it and confirmed he had it and was very happy to, to get it. There is nothing present, let me see. There is nothing here except just a basic principle that we are asking that we support our cities, not only here in Marmell, but statewide. The fact that this bill probably would not do anything specifically for our business people here in Marmell does not mean that we shouldn't support it because it will support businesses throughout the state. And we're not trying to create a law. We're just, if I, a bar from our city attorney, I think that a resolution is just stating our opinion or a preference, if I am correct in that. It's not a law of any kind.
That is accurate.
Okay, thank you. So as a member of the council, we were asked to do everything that we could do to, to assist in. And as I said, the Municipal League intends to continue to pursue this. It will come back up again at a time later. And I'm, I'm most, just for the record, Alderman, I mean, Representative Larry and I were, Lowry, were able to speak today together. And we both understand the points that, that are important in this regard. So I'm asking the council to consider this and vote in favor of it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome, Councilmember Holt. Is there any discussion, well, is there anybody who wishes to speak on the council regarding this resolution? Alderman, or Councilmember Vaporsen?
It's gonna be hard.
I've studied a little bit about this, but I know that probably any, more than anyone in this room who knows about this is Representative Lowry. And I'd like to hear from him on this and his thoughts into why it failed and to what the feelings are.
Well, he's actually filled out a card to speak, so.
Well, there you go. Okay.
Okay, well, let's hear from the council and then we'll take that. And then, all right, Councilmember Mosley?
I was actually hoping to hear from Mr. Lowry first.
Okay, okay, well, if that's what y'all prefer, okay.
Anybody else that wants to speak first, go ahead.
All right. All right, Representative Lowry, we'll, we'll let you have the floor. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Absolutely, thank you. Mark Lowry, live at 229 Summit Valley Circle here in Marmell and represent you. I'm in my third term in the House of Representatives. And I appreciate this opportunity. I hope that you'll give me a little latitude. I know it usually, public comments are three minutes and most people that know me know I can't even say my name in three minutes. So, and especially on a complex issue like this. You know, we, we just came out of a legislative session. We had signee die today and then immediately reconvened into another special session and had meetings today and, and will be in session for three days. So our work continues. And during the 85-day session, you know, twelve, over 1,200 bills came across our desk. And I, and I'll admit that with that magnitude of, that volume of legislation, there are some things that we might miss, okay? This is not one of them. SB 140 is something that was well-studied, well-researched. You know, I spent a lot of, most of my time on education issues. That's, that's what I drill down on. But when I see on the horizon an issue that's going to be coming to us, you know, we certainly change gears and, and drill down. And SB 140 was one of those where I really had to drill down. Because i- in, in concept, I agree that there is some inequity in terms of not having sales tax. And it does make it difficult for brick and mortar stores to be able to compete against that. But there are offsets to that. If you buy from the internet, for instance, you're going to be paying a shipping charge in most cases that you're not paying if you're going to the local brick and mortar store. But the main issue here, and Councilman Holt has already referred to this. SB 140 specifically, the, the sales tax of internet sales, it, it is a constitutional violation. It infringes upon interstate commerce. And as such, that is something that is going to have to be handled by either the U.S. Congress or by a challenge of the South Dakota bill that is heading towards the Supreme Court so that they can make a judgment then of whether this does violate the constitutional guarantees of, of one state not telling people in another state what they have to do. That they have to collect a tax and then they have to remit it. I mean, to give you a closer to home situation, it would be like us. And I know it pains us that we know a large percentage of our folks are shopping at the Walmart right outside the city limits. And those sales tax dollars are going to the city of North Little Rock. It pains us, you know, and we think, well, we ought to be able to tell them that they should find out where the buyers come from and then remit back to the City of Marmell the percentage of sales tax tied to Marmell residents. But we can't do that. That would be a violation of, of law. This is also a violation of law. Now, I will tell you, I did vote for a, another bill, House Bill 1388. And what it clarifies, and it is legal, is that a use tax shall be, if someone purchases from an out-of-state vendor, that vendor is, is supposed to provide to the, to the buyer notification of what their use tax would be. And they also notify the Department of Finance and Administration, okay? At that point then, it is up to the buyer, the Arkansas resident, then to work that out in their tax situation with DFA. That's perfectly legitimate. What we're doing here with SB 140 is we're converting a use tax to a sales tax. And that makes it a brand-new tax. And that was one of the things that I was extremely concerned about, especially, and also the constitutionality issue. I've also asked to be placed on, and I don't know if this is going to happen, but I've been asked to be named to a task force that will be looking at tax reform in the state of Arkansas. And that would be at, at all levels, property taxes, income taxes, sales and use taxes. And I think it would be more prudent for us to be able to conduct that task force to look at potential offsets that can happen. You know, over the last four years, we have given $150 million in tax cuts to Arkansans, both middle-class, and we just passed a $50 million tax cut for those making $21,000 and under. So there is a, a loss of revenue that I know people would be eager to want to make up. But we have to make sure that we have proper offsets. I don't think it's fair as a legislator or in Governor Hutchinson's situation to say to the people, we're cutting your taxes and not tell them that you're also trying to increase their taxes in another area. So I think we have to be open and transparent about that. Now, I understand that the resolution talks about generally the, the concept of internet sales tax. But it does specifically refer to Senate Bill 140. And that was one of the reasons why I wanted to address the council is to let you know that this was something that was not taken lightly. It was a very difficult vote because I know we're talking about statewide $100 million in potential tax revenues. But, you know, I happen to take the, an attitude different from what I've heard was quoted of the Senate President Pro Tem who said that the state of Arkansas doesn't have a spending problem, we have a revenue problem. I disagree with that. We do have a spending problem. Now, I, you know, I uncovered that in this past legislative session where we found out that even though school districts are consistently telling us to give them more, more money, they are sitting on $790 million, sitting in the bank, not being spent on kids. And I would dare say, even though I know this council is very frugal in the way that they budget, I would dare say that there are also some significant revenue fund reserves among our municipalities. And I know that you probably embrace that your number-one objective as a council member is to be a, a good steward of what you're provided, not to be constantly looking for new revenues. The last thing I would say is that sales tax typically is collected to pay for the services that are provided to support a brick and mortar store. Well, in the case of an internet sales tax, what service are you providing? You're not having to provide police protection or, or fire protection. You're not having to provide roads. But you're still wanting to collect that sales tax. And I think, just in summary, I think we have to let this thing go through the courts, as has already been referred to. And I think that we also have to give this tax reform task force an opportunity to look at all the potential offsets. If we're going to go ahead and, and take new $100 million in revenue, then I think, potential revenue, then I think that we, we have an obligation, one, to target the spending, to make sure we know where that money is going to be spent, and then also to be able to provide potential offsets. State of Arkansas, our citizens have the ninth-highest state and local tax burden of all the states. And that's not something that would be expected of what we consider to be typically a poor state. And it's because the sales tax is so much easier to pass in the legislature. You only have to have 51 votes. But if you increase the income tax or some other taxes, you have to have a supermajority. And so many times, we've gone to the path of least resistance, but it is also the path that sometimes most hurts our citizens. So I just wanted to, to bring the, I, I hope I added some clarity to this instead of more confusion. And I would just ask that you would recognize that we're trying to do our best to, to vet this legislation and to follow what's going on and would appreciate, in your consideration, that you would vote against this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Lowry. Councilmember Vaporsen, you had the floor, but was it just to hear from Representative Lowry?
That was all I wanted to hear. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I'll go ahead here. Appreciate your comments there. Council, Councilmember Holt? I appreciate, I appreciate your perspective on things, but I, I'm going to have to vote no on this. I, I promised my constituents that I would keep taxes and spending low and, and, and this, this would be more tax for my, for my constituents. And there was a speaker we had there at the Municipal League last time, and he emphasized, he said, you are here to represent your, your constituents, the people that voted for you, the people in your ward. And he said, don't get mixed up with being an advocate for the, the government that you're involved in. So I, I realize it's always nice to have more money to spend, but I, I don't think our, I don't think our constituents really want more taxes. So I'm, I know there's a fairness issue that everybody talks about and, and that, that probably has some validity. But I'm just gonna, I'm gonna have to vote no on that and, and, and go on down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mosley. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I had a question for Representative Lowry. Is that okay? You had said in, in your, I don't know, speech, whatever you want to call it, that this was a new tax. And, and I, I wanted more clarification on that because I really didn't see it as a new tax. I was seeing it as a tax that was not well-collected. Because it's, the burden goes back on the citizen to, to remit that to the state. But there's no way of, there was, there's no, there's nothing in place that will ensure that the citizen does that. So to me, that seems like it's a tax that is in place, not new, but is just not being collected. Am I wrong in that?
Well, it is, it is a use tax that is in place and needs to be enforced. And that's what the House bill does. The House bill puts an enforcement mechanism in place to collect a tax, a use tax, that's already on the books, but it's not being collected. And so it creates that process of the vendor providing the paperwork, both to the buyer and to DFA so that that tax can then be remitted. When you mandate, as SB 140 would have done, that a vendor, a store outside of our boundaries, collect the money and then remit it, now you're, you're transitioning from a use tax to a sales tax. And, and that is what makes it a new tax.
Okay. Thank you.
In my characterization.
Okay, so I think that's why I was getting confused because Councilmember said that he didn't want to support any new taxes. But it's really, we're talking about trying to collect or having a vehicle to collect something that people have already been supposed to be paying.
That's what the House bill does.
Right, and so the SB bill was trying to do, the, the Senate bill was trying to do that, but then they morphed into a new, a new tax, correct? That turned into a, a sales tax.
Yeah, it, it transitions it from a use tax, which is already in place, to something new, which is a sales tax. And, and I, again, I think that the main, the main issue is that there are some legalities to that. There's not, there's no constitutional problem with the use tax. There's no, no constitutional problem with a vendor notifying the buyer and the state that this product was purchased and this is how much tax should, should be collected. The problem is when you mandate that someone who is not under your jurisdiction, they're in another state, whether it's a border state or maybe it's a state on the east or west coast, that they, that you're mandating that they collect the tax and then remit it, that's when you're violating interstate commerce. And, and so we should allow those cases to be heard by the U.S. Supreme Court, and I believe they will. And at that point, then you are talking about something that's not unconstitutional if they, if they decide that it's not a violation of interstate commerce. It probably clears the way for Congress to feel more comfortable with proceeding with this. Because I know one of our congressmen, Congressman Womack, has actually been pushing for this for some time. But that's the level that it needs to be done at, not at the state level.
I agree. Thank you for the clarification. I, I think we, we, we get confused on the fact that we don't have any kind of represent, we can't, don't have any companies that have, like, let's say, Amazon doesn't have a physical location in Arkansas. And so we really don't have any jurisdiction over them. But like, if we try to buy something, even if it's over the internet with Dillard's, who does have a location here, actually in Marmell, that they are man, we can mandate from them, correct? We can mandate that they pay us the use tax.
If they have a physical presence.
Right. And so I think that's where people get confused. And so I just wanted, I, I appreciate your clarification.
Well, and a parallel comparison also would be if you were to go over into, went to Memphis, okay? And even though it's a little bit more of a burden to go to Memphis from here, say, two-hour drive. But if you're 30 minutes from there and you, Forest City, whatever, you go to Memphis and you buy a product there, the state has no way to be able to tell that store in Memphis, you have to remit the sales tax back to the City of Forest City because that's where they're from. Well, this is a similar situation. All we're talking about, though, is that the transporting of the, the request for the product is done by the internet. And then, then there's a shipping back. But there are some, some parallel considerations there. And I don't think we would ever consider telling the City of Memphis that they've got to coll, or the State of Tennessee, they've got a, or Texas, any of the border states. And, you know, I mentioned the, the ninth ranking in the United States for state and local sales tax burden. That compares very poorly to all of our surrounding states that, that have let, much less tax burden on the, on the people. So I think that, you know, it's past time for us to be looking at some tax reform, some substantive tax reform that looks at everything and does, and the mistake that we've made over decades is that we've done this in piecemeal fashion. This would be another example of that. And I think we need to take all of those pieces, gather them together, and look at them in terms of fairness, overall fairness to the people of Arkansas. That would include potential offsets on income tax brackets, on, you know, property taxes, such, such as that.
All right, thank you very much. Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. Come on back up, Representative Lowry. One more question for you and I apologize.
It's complicated.
I supported this resolution because I am worried about revenue generation in the future. You know, I, I don't want to see goods and services cut here in the community. We do have a good surplus right now. That's great, but I worry about the future. So I supported this and I really appreciate the clarification and education about the sales tax piece of this. But I've also noticed that Amazon's withholding funds from, they withheld it from me last week. So what is happening to that money that I have a vendor collecting? Do I need to contact the Attorney General?
No, well, they have voluntarily made the decision that they would do that. And then they remit the tax to DFA and then it is actually, then there's turnback to whatever municipality that you're in. And that sales tax is collected, I mean, they, you know, used to, the argument against an internet sales tax was that it was too complicated to be able to figure out what the sales tax rate would be, that you'd have to buy all kinds of software. Well, now it's much simpler, okay? But with much simpler, people have interpreted that to mean it's an easier grab. Well, no, there's still other hurdles that you have to go, go around or over and would have to deal with. And that's really all I'm asking for, suggesting, and, and those of us who did not vote for the bill are saying that there are, there's a more prudent path for us to move forward. This may be something that eventually happens, but we need to look at it in the total context of taxes and tax burden to the people of Arkansas and not just add it on as one, one other thing.
And I, and I can agree with not having the piecemeal approach. And I'm certainly not an advocate of sales taxes. But I'm concerned that we do have these large entities withholding funds, use fees, and it's just sitting in the state coffers. I think that's wrong, too.
Well, there's, I mean, the use fees have not been collected. That's one of the issues. Well, there's, I mean, the use fees have not been collected. That's one of the issues, or maybe some of them have. But if they have been, I think that there is a remitting. I mean, if, if a vendor actually did send that notification and DFA, you know, knows that you've paid, that you have this owed and you pay it, then that money is remitted back to the municipality that it's supposed to go to, the use, the use tax. But it's done through a voluntary, voluntary system that could also include offsets. You know, a person could, could do offsets as opposed, to their income tax, where it's a use tax, but with the sales tax, it's an additional tax on top of all the other taxes they're, they're paying. And it's tough. I mean, it is a tough issue. There's another one that I've kinda been hit on. And it, you know, it's not germane to this discussion, but I know there are people that are disappointed that I voted against the fuel tax or against the bond issue and, and how it may, how it may affect the interchange and the third, the third exit. But the thing I had to look at was, was this being, was this being characterized fairly and accurately? And it was not. So those are the tough, I mean, on face value, the headlines maybe look bad, you know, Representative Lowry voted against this, blah, blah, blah. But I, I promise you that there was a lot of study that went into both that and also this issue related to the internet tax. And, and I'm, you know, more than happy to explain in any kind of forum or, you know, if the, the Maumell Monitor or whatever the new paper is of the conglomerated papers, if they wanna get a clarification from me, I'd be glad to provide that as well. And I appreciate this opportunity. I, you know, I do appreciate where Councilman Holt's coming from. We had a pleasant conversation today on the phone. We, you know, we probably agree on more of the issues than those that we disagree on. Because I, I understand now, especially in seeing the resolution, that it's more about the general concept of internet sales tax, more so than that one particular bill. But you have, you have to take into account what is in front of us, which at that time was something that I just really felt like was an undue revenue grab without really any indication of, you know, how's this money gonna be spent? Is it legal that we're doing this grab and, and all the other parts of it?
And perhaps we need to table this.
Or change the wording.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Representative Lowry. Councilmember Holt?
In coordination with Altona Kelly, I would be in favor of tabling it. There is, he will verify that, again, Mr. Zimmerman told us that there are many stores, storefronts that are being hurt by this tax situation. That people are not buying, their, their, their sales are going down. There are stores that are cutting back on the number of stores they have, and some stores have literally gone out of business. So that was the approach and I, it, I would like to get the statistics to exactly what that is, because I think it's germane to it. So I would be willing, if the council is, to table this for the moment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table Resolution 2017-09. Is there any discussion on that? Is that an indefinite table? I mean, 'cause you'll, you'll have to bring it up with a supermajority or bring it a majority?
I think majority.
Majority, to bring it up?
I would do it indefinitely because I wanna see what comes out of the legislature.
Well, there's nothing gonna come out of the legislature for two more years unless they call a special session on this.
Supreme Court.
So it won't come out of the legislature. And what I wanna point out, though, too, is we do provide services for packages delivered in Maumell. They get stolen from the porches.
Yep.
We get to have to go out and fill out a police report. If you go purchase at a store, you carry it in your house and lock it inside. I think that's a valid point. I also think that, you know, streamlined sales tax, several years ago, the state legislature passed that. It helped Maumell. It's pointed delivery. So if there's a business, and we'll take Metro Appliances down the boulevard down here, when they deliver washer and dryer to Maumell, we collect a sales tax off of it. It's where the point of delivery is. Internet is no different. It's pointed delivery. And if Cabela's is in Rogers, Arkansas, we don't provide a fire truck to go there. But when they remit something to Maumell, Arkansas, they collect a sales tax on it. So it's pointed delivery. It's fairness. It's fairness with the brick and mortar. And so, I mean, and the legislature saw fit in 2006, I believe it was, or '08, to do the streamlined sales tax, is what they called it. So therefore, and if you don't do something like that, I mean, UPS, FedEx trucks use our streets on a daily basis. What are they doing? They're delivering packages from internet sales or from mail order sales, which I don't know if they exist anymore. But, and they may be delivering prescription drugs, who knows? But they're delivering products. They're driving on our city streets. If, and we, if you look at our sales tax collection for this month and for the year, we're down 11%. Guess what? In a few years, you're gonna be raising sales tax if this doesn't pass. This is not a new tax. You can couch it any way you wanna couch it. It should be remitted by every individual from the state that purchases something over the internet right now. You're helping your citizens break the law, okay? By not supporting this. And I wanna read one thing. Section 1, which it says, "Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Maumell," says that internet vendors provide the state and all relevant localities sufficient information regarding an internet purchase to allow state or local government to collect such local compensating use tax. That's in the resolution. Senate Bill 140 is up in the whereas. That means nothing. So if we add House Bill 1388, Representative Lowry said he'll support it. Basically, I understand, I understand. So, you know, maybe it just needs some semantics and it's not, not opposed to it. You know, whether it's a sales tax or a use tax, I think they're used interchangeably most of the time. So it is not a new tax, and that's my opinion on it. And I'm okay with tabling it. And I think you can address it and, you know, you can put the federal legislation in here, leave that in there, because that could clear up the whole matter. And, you know,
All we need to do is strike SB 140.
Strike SB 140 and strike the part about endorse state legislation requiring large-volume internet vendors to collect. And I think then, I don't see how I'll represent, I mean, that's basically what Representative Lowry spoke on behalf of, was let's, let's make them report back so that there is a means to collect it, or let's let it pass at the federal legislation where it's not the state of Arkansas telling the state of Tennessee, "You gotta make this business remit back to Arkansas." You know, but I still think that, that it's gone on too long and the federal legislation, they've been working on this for four years up there. And then you get two bills. You get one coming through the House, you get one coming through the Senate. The House committee stalled the Senate Bill 140 for weeks trying to decide where to spend the money that they were gonna try to collect. The committee, and then finally, the week of the last session, part of the session, they finally let it go to the House for a vote. So, I mean, it got, it got held hostage in a committee room, I felt like. Same thing happened to House Bill 1388. I don't think it ever got to a vote in the Senate, did it? Yeah, I don't know. I don't think it did, but it might have. But it, but, but they went, you know, through the alternating committees, so it's almost like a shell game. Let's hold it up where it can't get voted on, these two different bills. Now, that's my opinion of what happened at the State Capitol. I may be totally wrong. I wasn't there. But that's my opinion of what happened, on things I've heard and, and was there for a few days, anyway. But I'm okay with tabling it if that's what the council chooses to do. But I think when you can work on the language and then, and it, it, it does nothing to say pass Senate Bill 140. It just talks about us disappointed that it didn't pass. So.
Well, I think your problem with it all along has been the language.
Yes, yep.
Yeah, right.
Yep.
And House, it's, the 1388 did make it to the Senate.
It did?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second to table this, to allow some corrective wording possibly to be done. Any other discussion on that? Councilmember Mosley?
Tabled indefinitely, is that what we're saying?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Till it can be brought back and it'll take a majority to bring it back up.
And just introduce it again.
Excuse me?
I said, I guess it'd just be introducing it again, just-
With amendments.
Yeah, well, it'd be brought back up, yeah, or, yeah, okay. All those in favor of tabling Resolution 2017-09? Please signify by saying yes.
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 Any opposed, say no. Motion passes.
Can I express my appreciation to the city attorney? I didn't get it to him until Wednesday afternoon and he had it ready by Thursday morning, so he really had to work under pressure to get this out for us. So I appreciate his timely effort.
Thank you. And that's, that's what I said earlier. It was a placeholder to try to hold a place. That's why it actually said support for SB 140. And by the time we got it out, it was, it was not corrected, so. All right, next item is mayor's comments. Just wanna be reminding everybody that on Memorial Day, which is May the 29th this year, it's a Monday, at 10:00 AM, we'll be having our Memorial Day services at the Veterans Memorial at Lake Williston. So please try to make plans to attend that event. And the field of flags will be there prior to that day and be on display. And that's always a, a great memorial for the Arkansas fallen heroes. And then, wasn't on my comments, but I just wanna bring up that over the weekend, we did have some severe weather. We had some high winds and we had, and it depends on which part of town you happen to be in, but we had somewhere between four and a half and five and a half inches of rainfall in about two-hour period, from somewhere around 10:45 till 12:45 in Maumell, proper. We had to rescue a driver off Arnold Palmer Drive. We had to evacuate residents from Gable's Apartments and from Windsor Apartments due to high water in the parking lot. We, Jack, alarm's going off.
I thought that was a car.
I did, too.
Oh, is it a car? Okay, maybe a car. We've got an alarm downstairs that we've been fighting. Sounds just like it.
Gable and Windsor.
Gable and Windsor. The parking lot flooded and a, a number of cars were flooded in their parking lots. It did not get into any of the units of the apartment complex, but we had to rescue some people 'cause they wanted out of their houses, basically. We had a house flood at 13 O'Fia Drive. He said he had about two and a half feet of water in his house. We had a tree fall on a house over in County Club of Arkansas. We had a power outage in the Riverland area for about 12 to 18 hours, depending on what part of the area you were in. I know there was a power outage Friday night also. They were not storm-related, either one of them. One was a recloser on Friday night that opened because of a fault and then they closed it back. Once the serviceman got here and it held, the, the cause of the power outage on Saturday night was a cable failure. And so they rerouted power, but they'll be working to replace that cable. It's what they will be doing there. We had several garages flooded. We had several pools damaged by runoff and water getting into them. We had several trees down in the roadways that Public Works came in and worked alongside the fire department and removed those trees with backhoes and chainsaws. And then we had several streets flood and just local areas throughout the city of Maumell. So we'll be making repairs to ditch side slopes and roadside slopes in a few areas where it overtopped the road and then eroded out the side ditches. So that's where, and so I would like to, I know that we had police officers making those rescues and we also had firefighters making those rescues. And they were risking life because I know one of them encountered a water moxen up close, so, and was not real pleased with that. Chief Williams is nowhere in the area when that occurred, but, yeah.
Wouldn't be.
But he decided he'd let the snake come on through the area that he wanted to come through. But, you know, it is, there are other dangers just besides, you think, well, they're just walking through knee-deep water, but there's other dangers out there. So you can't see what's under the water. You might step off in a hole or a ditch or encounter wildlife that's trying to flee the water. So just appreciate all the, the help that, I know the, the fire department did a recall and all the volunteers came out and helped with that. But it's one of those things that, you know, we'd been warned and warned and warned and some people still didn't take heed and, but it's, it's one of those things, so. But I do appreciate everybody that, that worked to help the citizens of Maumell. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I actually, I drove down to the Windsor Apartments on Sunday just to see if there was any flooding down there. And did talk to one of the residents who was vacuuming out his car and doing some water vacuuming. And he was very appreciative of the fire department. He and his wife were two of the six, I guess, that were taken from their, off their front porch or whatever, by boat. And he was very appreciative of that. And he said, "I can't believe our apartment complex did not warn us of the water that could be in a parking lot in a heavy rain here." So apparently, they do not do a very good job of kind of warning their, their residents.
Water retention, yeah.
In fact, the city attorney and I had a discussion about that today, something that we may need to address with, you know, they either notify residents either by signage or by, you know, written notification when they sign a lease or something like that, that, that there's the possibility during heavy rainfall events that the parking lot could hold water, you know, and some of them are designed to do that.
I told him, I said, "If you have a five-inch rain in Maumell, your car's gonna get wet in this parking lot."
Mm-hmm, yep.
So, he said, "I wish I knew."
He knows now if he stays there, so, yeah, yep, yep. But there, there was, a lot of people moved their cars, too. And that's where, you know, sometimes be a good neighbor and let your neighbor know, "Hey, you, you might wanna move your car," you know?
Yeah.
So, 'cause a lot of cars did get moved over to the church, like this typically happens over there, so, out of Windsor.
Thank you.
All right, if, I don't have anything else. All right, the Planning Commission report and that was Councilmember Holt?
Me again.
It's you again, all right?
I was, I was thinking that I was done for the evening, but I, the Planning Commission was called to order at 6:35. There were three commissioners that were absent. There were four items on the agenda. One of them has to do with the proposed ordinance for ethanol and petroleum products to be limited. And the city attorney wrote that one up and he briefed the commission on that. There are two items regarding River Valley Point Drive. We will, we will get two of those items before us eventually, and the other two will stay with the commission. It was actually, we were excused at 6:45 because they were gonna be looking at some plat items. One of the commissioners that was absent was Commissioner Gersner and he texted in and said the reason that he was not there. He had just greeted a new baby. So we can let him know how, I think it's a baby girl. I believe it's what I understood.
I believe so, yes.
All right.
I don't remember. Okay, thank you, Councilmember Holt. Councilmember comments? Councilmember Vaporsin?
Just gonna let you all know, this past week I had, last week had Vivint. You may know the other security company. And they came to my home and did the smart home deal. And I'm kinda new to all that. I'd seen the doorbell with the video on it. And so I got all kinds of stuff. It's, so when somebody comes to my door, it rings the doorbell, it pops up on my phone and I can see them. You got that?
Yep.
And I can talk to them. I can change my temperature with my house from my phone. I can open my garage door. I can open my front door. Everything's wireless. All the glass break and the smoke alarm and all the different things. I mean, they have video and all that. I mean, it's, it's pretty impressive. My son, who lives not too far away, asked me if he could have access to it and I told him, "No." And he said, "Why?" And I said, "Because I don't want you waking up at 2:00 and saying, 'I'm gonna mess with my dad' and turn my heat up to 90." But, so, I mean, if somebody's going to your house, you don't ever have to give anybody a key. You can open the door. Matter of fact, my daughter was out walking the dog last night and the garage door was open for five minutes and, and it let me know, "Your garage door's been open for five minutes." It's quite impressive. And you also get an insurance break. Chris, who was the guy, came out and did mine. It was impressive. I mean, they were out within 30 minutes and had that thing installed within another 30 minutes or 45. And you got any questions about it, ask me. I'll get you his name and number. But it's, it's, it's quite a product. I've never seen anything like it. And so, like I said, it's, it's a neat deal.
Thank you. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I was just wanting to ask about the Councilman's extension. As the budget-wise, how are we doing on that? Is, are we coming in under budget on that? Are we gonna have excess funds by any chance?
Well, I, we haven't bid the utility section yet, so I can't tell you if we're gonna have excess funds until I get the bids in on that. And we're about to bid the section with North Oak Rock that's not- with North Little Rock that's not being done. Also, you know, there's a section that's a quarter mile in North Little Rock, so those plans are being reviewed right now by the city engineer at North Little Rock, and we're going to bid that project together, three-quarters of it will be paid by North Little Rock, and one quarter will be paid from, by Maumell, because it's a section right in front of the Diamond Center. There's a section that's not done right there, the north side is Maumell, the south side is North Little Rock, and so that's how we, you know, it's roughly three-quarters versus one-quarter, because it's about a half-mile roadway, but the predominant part of it's North Little Rock, so, and that was, that wasn't on their burner, basically, but they've kind of accelerated that now. So I can't tell exactly if there's going to be excess, but if there's any excess, it goes back to retire the bonds, anyway.
Okay, would it, would it, okay, would just retire them early?
Yeah.
Retire them early, yeah. We can't use it for any other project.
All right, can't go into the general fund or anything like that.
No, sir, no. No, it has to, it has to go toward that project or be used to retire the bonds.
All right, all right. And is North Little Rock, have they changed their mind about going ahead and paving that quarter-mile stretch or whatever?
That's what I'm talking about.
Or are they going to pave it now?
Well, they're going to, they're going to improve it, it's not just a pavement, they're going to move it over and align it with ours and rebuild that roadway. It was paved.
Yeah, but at one time, that was just going to remain a little what it is now.
Yeah, 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 no, they're going to widen it and do everything. That's, that's the project that's three-quarters North Little Rock and one-quarter Maumell.
Very good.
Yeah, so now, we're working together on that project, trying to get it bid this summer.
Excellent, you must have learned how to twist the mayor's North Little Rock's arm or something there, but...
We got somebody's attention that matters.
Well, I'm, yeah, I'm not going there. And we've worked it out, yeah, we've worked it out.
Thank you for that information, thank you.
Does anybody else have anything else? Mr. City Attorney?
I just want to know if Councilmember Vapurzain got a discount on his Vivint for the commercial?
Oh, no, but I'd be happy.
You should have negotiated that.
Yeah.
No, nothing serious to say.
Madam City Clerk?
No.
I'll get you the hookup, City Attorney.
If there's no other business to come for the council, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and second to adjourn, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Meeting is adjourned.